Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It's May 2nd. Councilman Shacklet, Vice Mayor Shacklet, has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Whew, Lord, we thank you for this day, for the many blessings that you've given us. And most importantly, on this National Day of Prayer, dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity we have to bring our concerns, all the issues that we face in a growing community that we have an offering, we can offer them to you. Lord, for that opportunity to pray, we pray for the comfort and safety and direction of all of our first responders, for our police, our, all our ambulance personnel. Lord, for all those that keep us safe on a daily basis, we just pray your direction for them and your watchful protective hand over them. Lord, we're so much to be thankful for in this community. We are truly a blessed people. May we never take that for granted. May we seek to honor you in all that we do and all that we are. And tonight, dear Lord, we pray your discernment over this, this body. Give each of us the wisdom to know what to do and what is in the best course for our citizens. Pray your continued blessings on us, dear Lord, as we seek to honor you in our public service, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I trust all is well with you. Tonight, we're going to go back a few months to recognize a recipient of the Stars Award for the month of February. This recognition was delayed for personal reasons, but tonight, we are delighted to have an opportunity to do it tonight. As you know, the purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize and reward those employees who go above and beyond their regular duties in providing outstanding customer service to our external and internal customers. And sometimes, that means creating a better quality of life for those around you. That's what tonight recipient does. She makes life better for others by going the extra mile. Tonight recipient is no stranger to us. This award is a long time coming. She and others in her department provide a level of customer service that's second to none that I think here in the city. Her department was named the 2023 Airport of the Year by the Tennessee Aeronautics Commission. Things just didn't stop there. The airport director, Chad Gerke, he was also recognized for outstanding contributions to general aviation in Tennessee. Tonight recipient is Ms. Kim Phan. Kim's been with the city now for about 15 years. She started off in the fleet department as a support specialist, and later was promoted to inventory control coordinator. Then in 2021, she transferred to her current position, which is the accounting clerk in the airport. After she transferred, I remember talking to the director of the fleet department, Jack Hyde, and he was, he hated to see her go, and now we all know why. And she, since she stepped footed in the airport, she's just been a shining star since then. Kim was nominated for the award by several individuals, including retirees who volunteer at the airport and are part of the Aviation Navigator Program. Their names are people such as Nancy Baker, Brian Littlegard, and Steve Hackey. She also was nominated by her department director, Chad. Following are some of the information that was included in the nomination forms. One of the persons wrote the following. He said, "I am at the airport, and I get to see the diversity of things that Kim does. The mantra in our office is, 'Ask Kim, because she knows who does what and where they are at any given moment.' This enables us as volunteers to quickly serve those who stop by our desk seeking information. She is consistently patient and will ensure the person we are having gets what they need. She takes people on tour on a daily basis." For example, one day, a couple came in to see the new airport. We knew that Kim knew about the point, knew all the point around, around the airport, particularly the new from the old. So we contacted Kim, and she took the person, the couple on a tour. They were thrilled with all had been done since their last visit. The wife explained that her husband had been remembering so many things on the tour, and he, and she wanted to know if they could visit the airport on a regular basis. Kim offered an even better solution. She suggested that a couple attend the weekly meetings for, for pilot and airport, airplane fanatics who meet each Thursday to relieve, to relive their experiences. The couple attended the meeting. Kim baked a cake to acknowledge the birthday, the birthday of one of the group members. And another person wrote the following. He said, "Kim has demonstrated exemplary, exemplary service by being much more than an accounting clerk. She's behind the scenes, she's responsible for airport customers and city administration needs. This does a whole lot of things for the airport. She has made the community environment possible for retirees by, like me, by establishing the airport navigation program. Watching Kim assist Chad and Ryan and other leading the airport employees made me ask the question, 'Kim, what can I do to assist you? Now I enjoy volunteering at the airport as a navigator.'" And finally, the department director said the following. "Kim does an exceptional job representing the city of Murfreesboro and the airport by providing outstanding service to whoever enters the door. Whether it is for a city training meeting, a city council workshop, or even a private event, Kim ensures that everyone is cared for. She understands how important a good first impression is. Kim never underestimates a person, event, or meeting. Because of her tremendous people skills and welcoming ways, the business center and the conference room continue to gain popularity. They are booked for various meetings and events every month. She truly enjoys how the airport is able to play such a big part in the community." Our finance department has recognized Kim's abilities as professionalism and is grateful for her hard work because she assists them in making sure that their job is done easier so they can concentrate on other things. Every Thursday morning, a group of retired pilots, mechanics, and FAA employees gather in the terminal lobby. They share stories of their adventures, travels, travels, experiences during their aviation careers, and some about the history of Murfreesboro. Kim makes sure that they are taken care of each time they meet. They have tremendous respect and adoration for Kim. We are highly blessed in this community to have so many outstanding employees who do extraordinary things each and every day. Kim Phan is one of those amazing people who works perhaps sometimes behind the scene, making sure that everyone can do their job. She is also responsible for consistently making sure that everyone is met with a smile, enthusiasm, and warm and caring greeting. For that reason, Kim Phan is a star. Kim Phan, if you would stand. On behalf of the mayor, the city council, and the great city of Murfreesboro, we recognize you as the Stars Award for February.
Okay, we're live. Here we go, folks. Get the top down just a little bit toward me. Sam, four here challenged. That's got it. We're good.
And I think in true fashion, that it's a family affair. Kim, you have, your husband's here tonight, right? He also is with the city of Murfreesboro. So the one thing we can say is that there is one fan who has a Stars Award. Better luck next time.
We have such good employees. Council members, if you'll give me just two minutes, I want to share something with y'all. A lot of us this morning started out our day, well, first, I started out my day at 3:30 this morning, you know, watching the news of sort of what's happening around the country. And I want to say, really, over the last three days, I have a different perspective standing up and saluting the flag and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, to Austin and Bill, for your service to our country, watching police officers in New York put, bring the American flag back up in, in North Carolina yesterday, and then fraternity guys surrounding the flag, I, it brings different perspective when we say the Pledge of Allegiance. So I want to say thank you to you guys. And as we started National Day of Prayer today, we had 400 people that gathered at MTSU to pray for our community and to pray for different levels of our community. So the day was in a, already started out great, but I want to bring awareness to a group. I was invited to come to First Baptist today to speak to the Possibility Place. And for many of y'all that don't know, the Possibility Place is young adults and even some older adults who are special needs challenged. But I, I learned, I walked into that, that room today, and there was probably 30, 30 men and women who were in there, and so they introduced me. And I spent 15 minutes getting hugs from about 35 people.
Wow.
So literally, that when I got done, I only had a couple of minutes that I spoke, but I was so, it made me think that with everything that's going on, there were people who were in there that didn't know a single decision that any of us had made on a Thursday night or during the week, and they told me how much that they loved me, and they did that unconditionally. And I can't think of a better day that I've ever had, being Mayor of Murfreesboro. So if you've not researched the Possibility Place, it's someplace that you need to, to not only open your hearts up, but also see any other way that you can, you can help them. So I know, Austin, y'all, y'all know about that group as well.
Claire's on the board, and one of her former students comes to our house, and we take him there. And that's where we go to church. And when they were getting ready to lose their space at the Experience Church, we were able to get them over to First Baptist. But you probably got a big hug from Hunter this morning, so.
I did.
I'm glad you were there, Mr. Mayor.
It was awesome. All right, congratulations to Kim, and really, I joke around, I wish that we could give a Stars Award to every single one of our employees because we, you know, it, it sometimes feels bad that we're just recognizing one person, but we have got a great group here in the city, and I hope you all know how much as a council we appreciate it. And I'm not just saying that because it's becoming budget time. All right, Jennifer, we don't have any action items or people wishing to speak under action items, okay? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have six items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the minutes of the November 9th through the November 17th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have land use matters. We have a plan and service, plan of services and annexation for property along Asbury Road. Mr. Bonley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is an annexation petition and plan of services for, as you mentioned, approximately 160 acres along Asbury Road. This property is at the very western terminus of Asbury Road, and it has frontage along I-24 as well. So you can see, it's the big area shaded in yellow on the map before you. It is located in the unincorporated county, but it is also within the city's urban growth boundary and also within the city's service infill area. That was a part of our general plan update that was adopted last year. The, the proposed Sazerac location, for a little bit further orientation, is here, just to the east of the subject property. So it is contiguous with the existing city limits. It's within the city's urban growth boundary. It is within the city's urban, or service infill area. The property is currently undeveloped. I think the only structure that is located there is a barn or a storage structure, as well as five billboards that are located on the, on the property along the interstate. So in its current condition, it will be relatively easy to affect the annexation of this property because it's, the demand for city services will be very minimal. However, when it, when it does develop, there will be significant infrastructure upgrades that will be required to be made in order to serve the subject property. One thing that I will mention is, is on our major transportation plan, the Cherry Lane extension is shown going through this property. So here's the Waldron property here, and the Cherry Lane extension goes here to a planned interchange here at I-24. So with infrastructure upgrades on this property, there are, this is a potential property, or a property that has potential major development implications if and when it does develop. And the owners have wanted for it to be in the city first before they submitted any type of zoning application. So with it being zoned residential in the county, if it is annexed, it will come into the city with an interim RS-15 zoning classification. But we do anticipate a rezoning request on this property if it's annexed at some point in the near future. Don't know exactly when that will be. The annexation petition and plan of services was before the Planning Commission in March and was unanimously recommended for approval at that meeting. We'll need to conduct a public hearing tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Bonley? All right, seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for a plan of services and annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll please come to the podium. If you'll keep all of your comments directed towards the council, we'll need your name, your address. You'll have three minutes if you're representing yourself individually, five minutes if you're representing a group like a homeowners association. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading the Plan of Services Resolution 24 RPS 07.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to the Annexation Resolution 24 RA 07. We need to get a motion for the annexation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to, now move to the Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for Property along South Church Street. Mr. Bonley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our second annexation tonight is for a .47 acre parcel located along the west side of South Church Street. It is directly across from the developing marketplace at Savannah Ridge Commercial Development, which is along the east side of South Church Street. So you'll see the property is colored in green on the map before you. It is contiguous with the existing city limits on both its east and north sides. The property to the north, which is located at the corner of Highfield Drive and South Church Street, was annexed into the city last year and is currently under development with a multi-tenant commercial building. There's a companion zoning request on this property that will be the subject of the next public hearing, but the plan of services for this property is in your agenda materials. It's directly adjacent to the existing city limits with developing property directly to the north. The extension of city services to serve this property will be relatively easy to, to implement. It is well positioned to be in the city, as is the property to the north that was annexed last year. It is within the city's service infill boundary and within the city's urban growth boundary. Be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Planning Commission recommended the approval of the annexation.
Any questions for Mr. Bonley? All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against the Plan of Services and Annexation, please come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading Resolution 24 RPS 08. This is for the Plan of Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to the Annexation Resolution 24 RA 08.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider a public hearing for the zoning of .47 acres.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is for the, this is the companion zoning request for the property that you just considered for annexation. The request is to rezone it to PCD, Planned Commercial District, for a 3,600 square-foot multi-tenant retail building. A sewer allocation variance request was considered by the city council back in January, and it was approved for the proposed uses that are, that are proposed to go in this, this building. The surrounding land uses, as I mentioned, across the street is the marketplace at Savannah Ridge. Directly to the north is a almost identical development that I think is going to be anchored by a, an urgent care clinic. This particular development is really following the, the development pattern of the property to the north, even identical buffering and screening standards for the neighborhood to the west. There is a county, or a neighborhood in the unincorporated county directly to the west that they will be providing buffering and screening to help mitigate any negative impacts. To the south are also some, some single-family residences that are located in the unincorporated county. However, those properties have been purchased by an investor, and we do anticipate additional commercial development on those parcels in the near future. The property is shown on the updated comprehensive plan, future land use map, as being recommended for neighborhood commercial land uses. The list of permitted uses in the PCD pattern book are consistent with what we would expect in the neighborhood commercial land use character. Staff is supportive of the rezoning request because it is consistent with the uses in the area. It's consistent with the, with the recommendations of the, the adopted comprehensive plan, future land use map as well. And then also because it is taking steps necessary to mitigate negative impacts on the adjacent neighbors to the, to the west. negative impacts on the adjacent neighbors to the, to the west. Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel has a brief presentation that he would like to give you about the proposed development, after which you'll need to conduct a public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Roundtree, I've got you queued up.
Mayor McFarland, council members, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I thank you for the opportunity to present you tonight, 3416 South Church Street. I'd like to thank the staff, Matthew and Holly and Margaret and everyone who helped us work through this process on this particular project. And Matthew did a great job summarizing kind of where we are in the process. So as far as, just to bring some things of note, as Matthew mentioned, we use the same architect that was for the adjacent property to the north, so the architectural character of the building is very consistent, which we thought was important. And that whole area with Savannah Ridge going on across the street, it's just exciting to see all the new development there. As far as, we had a neighborhood meeting, just want to bring to your attention, the property to the south, as Matthew mentioned, that the owner does plan on developing that in the future towards similar type of commercial development. He'll have a connection. He actually owns land that connects to Joby Jackson, so there's probably a consistent pattern of creating cross-connection. We were encouraged to do it, or actually, we needed to do it from the property to the north of us. That gets us onto Hightower Drive and, and so our Highfield Drive, excuse me, and I'm sure that same kind of pattern will can be consistent as the property develops to the south. We did add a fence as well as the buffer, but we were consistent with the buffer that's on the adjacent property. And then we added, it's a little curious right now, but we showed cross connectivity to the, to the east, to, I mean, to the south, and we're going to have a fence going across that temporarily, and that's primarily just to make sure the neighbor who, right now, that house is a rental house to the south, he was at our neighborhood meeting, we told him we're going to put a privacy fence up, and that'll keep any kind of strobing lights from going into that residence for those, for the renters there. So overall, it's consistent with what's happening on the adjacent property, again, the same architect, but we're learning as we continue to grow in our architectural standards in Murphysboro. You know, this building represents a lot of the features that you'd see in the, in the, you know, the avenue area and overlay there in the GDO, but it has the undulated roof lines, the variegated front, the defined base, made, all masonry materials on front, rear and sides, and so we do feel like we're consistent with the standards that are, you know, stipulated along Santa Bed Ridge and also the adjacent property. The only thing that came up in our process is on the right-hand side, that window you see is, it's basically a false window to give the appearance of a window. We had to make that a false window based on some fire, fire needs in relationship to the adjacent building. And on our plan, we were, our formal open space was basically brought into elevated landscaping and a hardscape area patio. So it's been, it's been a good project for us to work through. The only thing that I would like to bring to your attention is we do have an alternate in the pattern book of an entry point. That's still in process. We've asked the state if we can move the entrance drive down to the south, and that would become a shared access point with the property as it develops to the south. We have not got approval for that, but we are trying to be proactive in that process. Once the state approves that access point, we would, we'll just move forward versus having to go all the way back through the whole planning process. So staff was supportive of that process, you know, allowing us to do that at this point. But as, as of now, we don't have any word from the state if that's going to be approved as a, as an access point. Where we are located now is the approved access point, but I did want to bring that to your attention, if that comes up in the future, that we're requesting in the pattern book for another location for the drive. With that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you for hearing my presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? All right, seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now consider on first reading ordinance 24-OZ-08.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Obsteing.
All right, move to item 10, rezoning property along West Thompson Lane.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our final public hearing tonight is for the rezoning of 2.2 acres located on the north side of West Thompson Lane. It's bounded on its east, west and north sides by the developing Kings Landing Villas Development. Kings Landing Villas, back in 2020 or 2021, was, was rezoned as a planned residential development for a development that has both single-family detached homes and single-family attached townhomes. This property, the, the owner of this property, that's the subject of this rezoning tonight, was not ready to sell her 2.2 acres at that time, but the design of the plan always had in mind that this 2.2 acres, when the owner was ready to sell, would be incorporated into this, into this development. So as I pull up the plan, here's just the, the cover sheet, you'll notice that the, the orange boxes are the single-family detached homes, and those are all on individual lots of record. And so really, this 2.2 acres follows the same pattern with, on the, on the eastern street will be six additional single-family detached homes on individual lots of record, and on the western street will be 12 additional single-family attached townhomes, to continue the same exact pattern that was established when the original planned development was adopted. The architecture will be identical to what was approved by council several years ago. As a matter of fact, the architecture in the pattern book is, are the same elevations that were included in the, in the pattern book back two or three years ago. There was one change after planning commission, there was an, an error on the, on one of the elevations that showed on the townhomes, one of the units having a one-car garage, but all the units in the, in the townhomes will have two-car garages, and so that elevation has been updated for council. Just to give you a little bit of further context of the area, North Borough Court is here, single-family RS-15 existing subdivision, Kings Landing Villas in that horseshoe right there. Directly to the west of the subject property is the developing Cherry Blossom Downs that Mr. Burns is developing right now. Those are zero-lot line attached structures, and then Tuscany is located there in that The future land use map that was adopted last year shows the property as developing as AUR, which is auto-urban residential. The balance, the, the, the ratio of townhomes to detached homes is more than what the AUR would, would generally recommend. However, this is, in staff's opinion, in an appropriate time to utilize the transition policy, considering that it's filling in a gap in an existing development, and it, in staff's opinion, makes sense to continue the same development pattern that, that has already been established for this property. Planning Commission considered this rezoning request at its March meeting, and after a public hearing, voted to recommend approval to the city council. Mr. Clyde Roundtree would like to give a brief presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after Mr. Roundtree's presentation.
Mr. Bromley, I know that this is, was brought up in planning commission, but just to bring it in front of council, when this was passed a couple of years ago, we anticipated this to come through when that acreage came available as an addition to this subdivision. When it came through originally, we were anticipating this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and, and it was, the design of the, of the first section of this development always anticipated this filling in that gap.
And the densities are essentially in line with what is already there in terms of the horseshoe that's around it?
Yes, sir, almost identical. The, the lot sizes and the number of units fall directly in line with the, the pattern that has been established.
So for the one house that's on there right now, essentially, you're, you're gaining 18 living units, essentially?
Yeah, demolishing one and gaining 18, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, council members, Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. And to Mr. Wright's point, the staff really encouraged us to kind of master plan this whole property with the expectation that that two acres would come up for sale eventually. Mr. Fritzen, who was kind of our contact through the process, was in active participation with that owner to try to make sure that, that she understood and anticipated the situation and developed a great relationship with her. As it stands, she's still in the home, but she'll be moving out. He's moving her out in May. They're providing another home for her, so the house will probably be raised in the next few months. I think it was, as far as all of our open space, as far as our amenities, as guest parking, all the, the sizes of the detention areas were all compensated for expecting this to be developed in the way it is. So it was good anticipation from the team to make sure that we could accommodate, you know, the existing or the proposed, as well as the future, and now the future's here. So with that in mind, I have any question, you know, answering questions you may have, but it was a good project to anticipate the future, and it played out well. And just to bring to your attention, I talked to Mr. Fritzen before the presentation, that North Borough neighborhood had a lot of drainage issues prior to this development, and one of our commitments was to run a swale along that property line, which is on the eastern property line, to help alleviate some of the stress those neighbors were under. There's a lot of water kind of on this site that kind of basically got captured, and as a result of the development, we were able to put a swale in, and the drainage is much more favorable. We connected some of their back properties with swales coming onto our swale. So this is one of those things we tell people, that sometimes development can really change the situation from a drainage standpoint, and this is one of those situations where we really were able to kind of build that expectation and deliver on that. So I'm a big believer that if there are some issues on adjacent relationships, there are some things we can solve in the design process, and this is one of those cases.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? All right, seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the rezoning of this 2.2 acres, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 24-OZ-09.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to sewer allocation variance, South Church Street, and this is Yana. I'm going to let you, Mr. Barbie, pronounce that.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. The, I have a total of three sewer allocation variance requests for you tonight. The first one is along the east side of South Church Street for the Yanali Group Commercial Development. You've previously received a request from them in June of 2023, where you approved a nine-single-family unit variance from the single, from the sewer allocation ordinance. Since then, the tenant mix has firmed up a little bit more, and they have one additional restaurant that wants to move into this location. Being such, they are requesting an additional 18 single-family units to support the commercial development of this property. Our Water Resources Department has reviewed the application and confirmed that the additional capacity is available in the area, and the Planning Department is in support of this request, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Barbie.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 12, sewer allocation variance, New Salem Highway, Salem Square Commercial Center.
Good evening again. This is a sewer allocation variance request for Salem Square Commercial Center located along New Salem Highway. This is to support a two multi-tenant building development. They are requesting seven, seven single-family units of additional capacity in order to support the development. Our Water Resources Department has confirmed that the capacity is available, and the Planning Department is also in support of this request.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to item 13, sewer allocation variance, Veterans Parkway, Fresh Hospitality Commercial Development.
Yes, sir. This next request is from Fresh Hospitality for their development along Veterans Parkway. They are requesting additional 17 single-family units in order to support a, I believe it's a three commercial multi-tenant buildings to be located on the property. Our Water Resources Department has confirmed the capacity is available for the request, and the Planning Department is also in support of the application.
That's cool. Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. All right, we're going to move to our yearly resolution for unclaimed property. This is Resolution 24-R-11. Ms. Brown?
This is our annual request to the state for unclaimed property remitted by the city for any outstanding property that remains unclaimed and has met the required holding period. This year's request is for $18,424.96.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to BZ River Rock Connector Change Order 1.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. The, the start of the project of the BZ River Rock Connector project was delayed, or at least portions of it, was delayed by 173 days due to some problems we had with the environmental permitting process. Bell has and associates has requested additional 105 days to be added to the contract time. I'll add to that. The project's moving along very well. They poured the deck and started pouring the parapet, so we don't actually think this time is, is needed, but we wanted to, to be fair to them with this. We have, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Griffith, I was there yesterday, and it looked like they were working on River Rock, on the road, turn lanes on River Rock, it looked like, so.
Yes, sir, there's a turn lane and actually signalized there as well.
Any questions? I want to reiterate, this change order is not have a monetary figure to it, so it's just days.
Best kind.
Right. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 16, professional services contract for the southeast Broad widening.
Yes, sir. This, uh, staff requested a proposal from Kimley Horn for an assessment of the Southeast Broad Street corridor there between South Manny and Bradville Pike. Uh, this contract includes traffic data collection, operational analysis, and the conceptual design services, which will provide essential information for the future full design contract. Uh, the final design will be a, a five-lane curb and gutter section with sidewalk on each side as outlined in the 2040 major thoroughfare plan. Uh, the cost of this work is $57,700 is, was included in the FY 24 C I P budget. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Will that intersection be improved also where it's like that crazy one left turn onto Martin Luther King in a straight lane and, or is it going to be a full five lanes plus turning lanes, or how's that going to look?
That's what they'll be analyzing is, is how many turn lanes. You know, we've actually got the room there. We could do double, uh, layoffs, but we want to go through the analysis with it. But yes, that, that's the primary reason. We've got lane drops there at Manny and, and you kind of get into a lane trap at the intersection that you're talking about. So that's the, the main goal is to fix those two intersections.
Yeah, that's, that's a wonderful project that needs, needs to be done for a long time, so I move for approval.
Chris, are they going to look at, you may remember last year, we had the DECA group that came in, talked about that street. I think it's Ash Street. It's by the Tire Place. Could they possibly improve that? That's still a pretty significant problem.
We've, we've, uh, that's included with that, uh, that grouping as well.
Okay. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 17 Medical Center Widening Professional Services Agreement Amendment.
Uh, yes, this is an amendment to the original contract, uh, for the, for the improvements to Medical Center Parkway, which was approved in August of 2022. Uh, if council will remember, we had not clearly defined the improvements that we had planned at the Medical Center and Broad Street intersection. We feel like that we have those better defined now and we're asking for an increase to, uh, E L I's original contract in the amount of $351,422 to complete the additional work assigned. And that will be included in the FY 21 and 22 C I P bonds. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is another much-needed infrastructure improvement, so I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. All right, we'll move to item 18, um, Old Fort Park Tennis Court Renovations.
Good evening, mayor and council. First item that I have for your consideration tonight is a project that consists of demolition of the original eight tennis courts at Old Fort Park, the construction of six new tennis courts, six new pickleball courts, fencing, lighting, and concrete curving around the new courts. This will provide a safe and desirable place to enjoy these sports. Project was competitively bid and Steelhead Building Group, LLC was the lowest responsible bidder. The project cost of $1,244,403 is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a double second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 19 Discovery, uh, Discovery School Multi-Sport Court Installation.
At the Discovery School, the existing tennis court, uh, the west end of the court has extensive tree root damage. This project will remove the damaged asphalt, replace the existing fence, remediate the remaining surface, and install sport tiles for pickleball, tennis courts, along with basketball and four square courts. This project will provide a safe and desirable, desirable place to enjoy these sports and will be done through a source well contract with Sport Court of Tennessee. The total project cost of $139,855 is funded by a $93,000 project diabetes grant along with $46,855 by interest on county shared bonds. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm assuming the tree will be removed that caused the damage?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't remove trees, Austin.
Do I?
We don't remove trees.
Right on top of it.
I like trees.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll look at installation of a snake rail fence at 2150 Northwest Broad Street.
In 2022, the American Battlefield Trust donated 43 acres to the city at 2150 North Broad Street to preserve its historical significance. This project will allow for the expansion of the neighboring Stones River Battlefield by removing the existing property line fence and will open up the area between these two properties that will allow the battlefield to expand all the way out to North Broad Street. Existing chain link fence along Northwest Broad and Van Cleve Lane will also be removed, and these two areas will have fencing installed to match what's currently at the Stones River Battlefield behind on Van Cleve Lane. This will enhance the visibility of the battlefield and increase the attractiveness of the 840 corridor. This project was competitively bid and Volunteer Fence Company, LLC, was the lowest responsible bidder. The project cost of $76,800 is funded by the Parks and Recreation Department's FY 24 operating budget. I'm happy to answer any questions on this one.
Is a snake rail fence a fence to keep snakes out? I mean, I don't know.
No, it's, um, the closest example would be around the, the front at Cannonsburg Village and the, uh, Oakland's Mansion. It's that type fence, the wood rail, the kind of zigzag fence.
Okay. Thank you. They showed me what it was.
Bill's an expert on that.
Oh, yeah. Many of it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have a guardrail replacement agreement.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I hope to find you guys well. I have before your consideration this evening an agreement for guardrail replacement with Lou Inc. Lou Inc. was the, uh, single bidder and in the amount of $208,196, and that, that funding comes shared from, uh, risk management and street department budget, and I am here to answer any questions you may have for it.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have purchase of replacement downtown signal equipment. Mr. Kerr?
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. The central business, the central business district signal system was originally installed in the early 1990s. I actually installed the system in my first tour of duty with the city. How long has it been? Uh, the traffic signal network currently operates on an antiquated software platform that is no longer supported by the original vendor or the Windows 7 platform, resulting in the need to replace controllers and communication switches that have exceeded their useful life. This will migrate the downtown traffic signal system onto the same modern platform that is used to operate other signal systems within the city. This expense, $91,295, is funded by sports betting funds. I'm available for any questions. I know you're going to ask me something.
Is this going to resolve the sitting at, uh, red lights when it's like seven in the morning and there's no traffic? Will that help resolve?
It'll, it'll give us more flexibility in, in what we can do with, with, with how we program and set up the different timing plans that are associated with the time of date plans and whatnot.
All I need to know. Move for approval.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Kerr. All right, you have, uh, reappointment to the Murfreesboro Housing Authority. And there's been a lot of questions about this, especially with the new Oakland's Phase One and Phase Two. The Murfreesboro Housing Authority, although we love partnering with Murfreesboro Housing Authority, are a complete separate organization outside of the city of Murfreesboro. Uh, we do have the authority to, to by resolution appoint the members on there, but once we appoint the members on there, it is completely outside of the scope of the city. Now, I mean, it's great. We'd love to take credit for the, the Phase One and Phase Two, as nice as that is, but a lot of people have asked, been asking me about how we're associated with that, so we, uh, provide assistance however we can.
Your appointment is, is a very dedicated person to that, uh, authority, so I move for approval, now that reappointment.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any beer permits?
We have several tonight. There's five regular permits. Two are for new locations of grocery markets located at 2546 South Gate Boulevard, Sweet Sea, and 4923 Northwest Boulevard, Northwest Broad Street, and a new location for a sports venue located at 1210 Greenland Drive. There's an ownership name change for a restaurant at 1813 Memorial Boulevard, and an ownership change for an axe throwing and smash room at 123 Southeast Broad Street. There's also two special event beer permits for Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce for events on multiple dates. All applicants have met requirements for beer, for their permits, and are recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections for their regular permits or special event permits for the special event beer permits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chaklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business from, uh, excuse me, we have no statements, right, Ms. Brown?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff?
I have an announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, last Thursday, one of our police officers, um, Shondell Clark, wasn't feeling well and went home. Um, when he drove up in his drive, he felt his, uh, left hand going numb and his left side. He tried to get out of the truck and, uh, fell on the ground. And eventually someone saw him in the neighborhood and came to help him, and, uh, he has, uh, suffered a stroke. And, um, so just asking prayer for him. When he called me, he said, hey, I'm in the emergency room. I said, okay. And he said, I said, why? He said, I just had a stroke. So he told me the story. So he's asking prayers for the city. He's now been moved to, is it called Trust Point?
Trust Point.
Okay, he's been moved there.
Awesome. We'll keep him in our prayers.
Mayor, uh, May 1st was School Principals Day, and, uh, it's a day where they thank our principals for the work that they do on a daily basis. We have a group of exceptionally caring and qualified and dedicated principals that serve our Murfreesboro City Schools and so on. It's, when you see a principal, say thank you.
And I, I see, I want to say it is good to see our planning staff here. So we have a lot of our planners and engineers and, Ben, I don't think I want to recognize you for the fourth meeting in a row of being a new professor.
I'm here just to defend.
Let's do it anyway.
Yeah, Austin, he's staff.
I did want to bring up, uh,
Yes, sir.
two things. Um, I guess in reading one of the press releases by Mike, um, some of, I guess, the technology, the license plate recognition technology that we had voted upon, I guess, last year, you know, was put into action was key in, I guess, apprehending a couple of gentlemen that had robbed a Dollar General. So that was, not that I wanted to see the Dollar General robbed, but the point is, it was good to see that the money that we're investing in our police, you know, was put to good use. And then the second thing I, I just wanted to kind of bring up, and I'll just say, say this, is I'm a big fan and a big supporter of Oakland's. Uh, Oakland's, you know, is, is part of the community. It's part of our heritage. And I really want to encourage, you know, us as a city, us as a council to, to think about ways that we can work better with Oakland's. Um, you know, it's my understanding right now that a lot of their permits are on hold, um, for various events over an ordinance with regards to parking in the grass. And I would just encourage us, I would encourage Oakland's to contact the city, but I would encourage us to find a way to work together because there's a lot of events that go on over there that I think are good for the community.
Um, Craig, it may be good to put, if we're going to talk about parking in grass, I think we, you know, we just can't do that for one organization, so that'd be something that we need to look at overall, the overall city and then, um, see what the rent, you know, what that discussion would be and sort of what the ramifications. I, I think, Austin, everybody agrees, we want to work with Oakland's, but the good, you know, the thing, and I think it is good for, for political officials, we don't get to pick and choose what ordinance is that we enforce and don't enforce, especially if they're on city property. And so it'd be good for us to be able to understand what that means, you know, across the city.
Yep. What's, what's a way to fix the ordinance so that there's a way forward for them and for other organizations, um, not just to benefit them, but to benefit everybody?
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say though, there is a two, there is a, a different side of that too, because I know Tuesday night I was at a, at a baseball game at a newly constructed facility where people tried to park in the field, and there were students with a four-wheel drive truck after it had rained that were pulling cars out of that field that were, were stuck. And then the next thing Mr. Hillis can tell you that we then get complaints about muddy streets and all those things. So I think we just need to understand the overall, um, landscape and figure out how we do it.
And we can do that. Uh, next Thursday. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just, I was going to wrap it up. So if you have something.
Well, hey, Nate, can you come to the podium?
Someone's in trouble.
Just to clarify, are there any events on hold at Oakland's Mansion?
No Oakland's events. There are other outside events that were pausing and looking at park, parking opportunities, but zero Oakland's events have been put on hold. I think there's been some, this is representation of that.
What other events are on hold, out of curiosity? I'm just curious.
There are two right now, large-scale events. So there's, uh, the Hot Chicken Festival, which they've applied for a special use agreement with us, and then a Borough Pride Event. So we're working with both of those to try to come up with appropriate locations or parking plans, but no Oakland's events have been put on hold. We actually haven't, they haven't called us about their events.
My biggest concern is, is if we don't find a solution, I don't want to see 200 cars parked up and down Manny.
Yeah, so one of the solutions that we're looking at is we've identified 150 paid parking spots, so I think we can come up. We've been working with other areas around even other city property that we might be able to add 40 more. So it can host, you know, Oakland's is not a site designed to, to host events of 1,000 people, just in general. But, you know, if we hit that 3, 400 mark, I think we can. We have enough paid, paid parking spots. And I'd be glad to talk to anybody who wants to host an event. They can reach out to us and talk about those.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for our team? Council members, just so everybody, everyone's on the same page, um, I know that we are a week from this Friday. We have, uh, starting at nine o'clock in the airport conference, uh, the airport center will be, uh, having a day of, of interviews for our city manager, um, two city manager applicants, internal